Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, May 21st, 2018. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invitation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets here near the end of May, we are ever mindful that this coming weekend, we will be celebrating Memorial Day. Our community is proud of our history of military patriotic service to our nation. We have forty-six names up on the plaque at Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street of those from our community who gave the ultimate sacrifice during the World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and their spirits as we remember them with great fondness and admiration as we acknowledge the coming Memorial Day tradition in our community. Tonight, as also, we, as always, we want to ask for a special understanding and vision and direction as the City Council acts on the important matters of business that are on our agenda. And we just ask that each of us be, go forth with a proud idea of what Batavia should be and can be and what the future should hold. Also tonight, we want to bless all those from our community who are serving in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America at the moment. And we just ask that a special blessing be shined upon them in whatever theater of action they are serving. We just ask also for a guidance and appreciation for the great town that we have, knowing that each member of the City Council is here to do what in their own hearts and minds will be in the best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saroun?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen elected Aldermen are present and accounted for, so we now have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four on our agenda, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atech, Chairman of Governmental Services, do you have anything?
I do not have anything tonight.
Anybody on the council? Okay, moving then to item number five on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Atech is Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and Place on File Committee of the Whole Minutes for April 17th, 2018, and April 24th, 2018. Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for April 23rd, 2018. Building Report for April 2018. 2018 Post-Issuance Compliance Report. Approvals: May 18th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $806,340.27. Accounts Payable Check Register in the amount of $4,933,262.23. City Council Minutes for April 16th, 2018, and May 7th, 2018. Ordinance 18-32 Declaring Surplus Property. Resolution 18-61-R Authorizing Application for Kane County 2018 Community Development Block Grant. And Resolution 18-63-R Authorizing Acceptance of Grant and Funding Agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority. I move that we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Chanset, for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number six, Matters from the Public for Items That Are Not Found on the Agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Okay, moving to item seven, which is the Main Street Report. Kathy's?
Good evening, everyone. I, we're going to keep it really short tonight, we know you have a busy agenda, but we just wanted to take a moment and talk to everyone this evening about a really exciting day coming up in Batavia next June the 2nd. We've got three great big events planned that day, all kind of based around health and wellness for our community. We're going to kick off the Batavia Farmers Market that day. This is probably our most popular program running. We'll host thousands of people on River Street every Saturday morning. It's great, we see many of you down there that day. This year, we'll host about thirty-five vendors on River Street in addition to artisans the third Saturday of every month. And we'd like to present, or thank our presenting sponsors for that program, which is Katrina Salon and Xfinity. Also, on that day, we're going to host our 5K, our Race to Market Opening Day 5K. This year, we have a tank and a tee-shirt option, and a fun Heather green color. The race is open to everyone. If you walk, if you run, if you have a stroller, if you have a dog, it's open to everyone. So please come out, consider coming out and joining us. I did hand out cards that look like this to City Council members, there's a code on there to get $5 off your registration if you'd like to join us. We're also going to be offering this to all the city employees, so hopefully we'll get a contingency of city employees that'll come out and join, and join us that day. And the Race to Market is sponsored by our friends and partners at Power Move Yoga. The third event that's going to happen that day is the Well Batavia Initiative, the Well Batavia Festival. The initiative is a community action committee working to promote healthy Batavia, healthy Batavias, yeah, healthy Batavias too, but, healthy behaviors through partnerships and policy and making health resources accessible to all. Many of you know our wonderful community members, Abby Beck and Sarah Greenhagen, I know they've been before the council before, they are the committee, they are the head of the committee that brings this program to our downtown. It's going to be a really wonderful event, we encourage you all to come out. It's in conjunction with the Farmers Market this year, so everything will be on River Street. In conjunction with Well Batavia, we're continuing to host our health and wellness seminars, which have been at the Tea Tree every Thursday night in May. We have two left. This week, there's a nutrition seminar, and on the May 31st, we'll end with Becoming Electric Car Driver. And that one actually is going to be held over here in front of the newly installed charging station. So all those happen on June 2nd, it's going to be a beautiful sunny warm day downtown Batavia, come on out and join us. Also, cocktails in the park tickets went on sale this week. We're capping sales this year at 500, we expect a pre-sale out, so hop online and get your tickets before they sell out. If you're interested in getting involved, check out our website at downtownbatavia.com or give us a call. As always, thank you and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any questions to Kathy tonight? Thank you guys for the excellent job you continue to do.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to item eight, which is a proclamation for Public Works Week on May 20th, 2018 to May 26th. Alderman Atech?
Proclamation. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and an informed citizenry is vital to efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, water, wastewater, and electric, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the City of Batavia, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on this 20th day of May 2018. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor.
You want to make a motion?
I move that we approve, the proclamation is read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Stark, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. We are honored tonight to have Gary Holm, our Public Works Director, here with us to receive this. And Gary, on behalf of the citizens, thank you for a great job on your department and all those, do you want to make any comments about yourself?
Very, very quickly, thank you. Today's storm has kind of reminded me about, you know, just one aspect of public works and the guys being out in the field during, you know, pouring rain and lightning. The national agency, the American Public Works Association, has just recently started a campaign to promote the fact that public works is part of the first responders, you know, we were out during the recovery operations, responding to, you know, debris removal and those types of things. Many of you know I sit on, I'm a board member of the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, and when the city joined back in 2008, we had thirty members throughout the state, and today we have over three hundred and fifty members. So the agency has grown tenfold in the last ten years. So, I just wanted to say those couple things, and the most important, tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, those of you with preschool children, it's the annual Truck Tales at the library, where we read stories about trucks, and then we'll have a truck out there.
presentation on Youth Outlook by Peter Thaddeus.
We were going to have a brand-new sewer truck out there, because it's really kind of the only time that I would allow the kids around it, because it's brand-new, but it's actually
Could you come forward and use the mic, please?
Your Honor, very quickly, before they get started, I want to introduce the group.
going this week out to a conference up in Villa Park, so it'll be a snowplow as we normally
I actually invited them to come here tonight.
have in past years, so.
I met Peter about ten years ago, I purchased some of his artwork, and over the years,
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great work.
I've seen him at Art Near I, seen him at various festivals around Chicago, and we recently reconnected. I told him I'm an Alderman, and he told me he works for this organization that does great work, they're based out of Naperville. We have talked as a council, especially over the last year, about what it is that we can do for at-risk youth in our community who have turned to drugs and have turned to suicide. Youth Outlook is exactly the type of organization that deserves our recognition, and I do think we need to get the word out. They are the first social services network in Illinois dedicated to supporting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, HIV-positive youth. The organization provides support for families as well as a place for these at-risk youths to be themselves, and to let them know that they're not alone. I went out and bought the pinkest of ties I could today, to show my support for this organization, and I guess I would say to the closeted gay kid who's watching on BATV that you are not alone. We survived bullying in high school, and some of us went on to become parents, and coaches, volunteers, business owners, police officers, Marines, artists, and even Batavia Aldermen who decided this morning that maybe I should seek one more term, in part because I'm inspired by organizations like yours. The mayor's going to present a proclamation recognizing this vital service that you provide to our community, and I would ask for the council's unanimous support. But first, Peter, if you can tell us about your organization, which celebrates its twentieth anniversary this year, and then you're also joined by Glenn Myers, who is a member of your Board of Trustees, and then also Denise Fairbanks is with you tonight, who is the site leader for a drop-in in Geneva. Peter?
Thank you, Dan. So again, my name is Peter Thaddeus, I run the Naperville Tuesday Night Program, the Naperville Site Leader, and the Healthy Relationship Program for Youth Outlook. And you've kind of listed off our mission and everything, you can find further information at youth-outlook.org, but I want to answer some questions tonight that we get from youth and parents and other people in the community about who we are and what we do. We have seven different drop-in centers across northern Illinois for LGBT youth, and we mentioned Denise Fairbanks over here, she's awesome, she's a good friend of mine, she runs the Geneva site, and that's the closest one here. We also provide community education for professionals, we have a youth leadership program, and we have a parent support group as well. We're celebrating our twentieth anniversary this year, which is awesome, but a lot of people still don't know what we do. After twenty years, I feel like we've been coming out of the closet ever since 1998 very slowly. So, a few years ago, after about our seventeenth year, we started publishing our drop-in center addresses, which is interesting, because I also came out of the closet when I was seventeen, when I attended Youth Outlook as a youth. So that's my personal connection, I came as a youth, and Youth Outlook really helped me be more comfortable with who I was and better able to navigate high school and further look for community and find community in school. Seventeen is also important, number two, because in the year 2000, that was the average age of someone coming out as gay, and now that age is thirteen and a half years old, on average. So we've expanded our age range from fourteen to eighteen years to cover up to twenty years old and down as young as twelve and thirteen years old. We have a lot of junior high kids who come, that they need support as well, and they come to our groups. I get calls all the time from parents of seven, eight, nine-year-olds who also think their kids are gay or trans and need a space. Unfortunately, we can't accommodate them at this time, but we are looking forward to doing that at some point in the future, having a space for the younger youth as well. So, people ask, like, they get the basics of what we do, but they want to know, what am I going to do if I come to a drop-in center, what am I actually going to do? So we have discussions, we do activities, we have life skills that they learn through this education, and most importantly, it's being around other people like me, finding that community, and the most important thing we do is just offer that space for people to feel involved and feel accepted. I mentioned that I'm the Healthy Relationship Programmer, and I'm also an artist, so I kind of combine our programs with artwork. So I go to all seven sites and bring my artistic abilities into the groups, especially the groups that are heavier topics. You don't want to leave kids with super-heavy hearts, you want to uplift them and provide something for them to look forward to after they leave group, not just a sad discussion. So, I want to talk about quickly about a couple programs that I like to run. One of them is called the Emotional Kaleidoscope, and it is a list, each youth has a list of thirty different emotions, and they check off what they're feeling that day, and each emotion is assigned a color, so they take each color of triangle and make a kaleidoscope out of it. So each youth then shares their emotions with each other, with the group, based on their art project. And if any of you have teens or work with teens, you know that it's very difficult to get kids to explain their emotions. How are you? I'm good, I'm fine, whatever, but you'd be amazed at what they come up with when given the opportunity to do it visually. The other program that I really liked to run was Timely last year, and it's kind of timely again. If any of you have heard of the TV show Thirteen Reasons Why, it is about suicide, and it is very important for the LGBT community, it's a really important topic for us to discuss, because it affects the LGBT community and LGBT youth more so even than their straight and cisgender peers. But, in this program, we talked about the TV show, because most of our youth had been watching it, so I wanted to cover it. We talked about the show, we talked about, I let them discuss what they know about suicide and any personal experiences they might have had, because unfortunately, we have had a lot of local youth even recently that have either attempted or committed suicide. So it's a heavy discussion, but then we balance it out with the Sand Art Project, and the art project is called Seven Reasons Why I'm Still Here. So the youth list things, skills that they have, something that the world needs to see that they have, a favorite family member, a best friend, whatever it is, seven things, seven reasons why they're here, things that keep them going. And again, the most down-and-out youth, you'd be amazed at how many things they can actually come up with when given the opportunity. And on a personal note, I looked over, when we ran this program before, I looked over the shoulder of a couple of youth, and they mentioned Youth Outlook as something, why they're still here. So, before my mascara runs, I just wanted to mention our community education. So we do get invited by corporations and organizations to come and talk about LGBT issues. So it's anything from LGBTQ 101, basic terminology, to other specific issues they may be dealing with in the workplace, how do, how to refer to their transgender employees, things like that. And we also do educate the educators, so go into schools and talk with teachers about similar topics, it could be LGBT 101, or something, again, we have a lot of trans, transgender-focused issues to discuss lately, and a lot of transgender youth are coming out younger and younger as well, so that's been a big thing at schools. We also go to GSAs, Gender Sexuality Alliances, or Gay Story Alliances, and do programs there. I'm going to be actually in Havre Middle School, and Glenn Allen coming up, it's a return visit, and I'm going to be doing a Youth Outlook-type program over there for their awesome youth. So we do a lot of those, and the last thing I will mention, as far as our public visibility, is the Aurora Pride Parade. So that's the first time we're going to be having a pride parade in Aurora, and Youth Outlook is going to be sponsoring, and we are also going to be marching in the parade with some of our youth leaders and our awesome team of people. So I, if anyone is interested in learning more about Youth Outlook, you can, again, check out our website, youth-outlook.org, or send me an email. We also have mission tours, hourly mission tours that we have every once in a while, and the next one is coming up on July 12th, so you can come and see us there, and that's going to be located at our Geneva drop-in site, which is on our website. And again, the Geneva site meets second and fourth Thursdays from 6:30 to 9:00, so if anyone knows anyone in the Batavia, Geneva area, any youth that would like to attend, they can find us there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Sure.
Because I wanted them to see the beautiful artwork.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was.
It also has all the information about your organization, so you can let people know that if they do.
Yeah, I didn't know, okay. Yeah. So again, that is the Geneva Drop-In Center right there. Information, we met the Unitarian Universalist Society of Geneva. Let me see Denise. So again, these are the programs I was talking about, the Emotional Kaleidoscope and the Seven Reasons Why. You can kind of see the impactful nature of the kaleidoscope up there, and Seven Reasons Why is, sounds like such a heavy topic, but when you look at it in Sand Art form, it's much more uplifting. And again, our mission tour is on Thursday, July 12th.
Okay, you're on TV when we have you up here at the podium, so there's a lot of people watching this around here in the room. And I guess one thing I would ask you, and I do this with everybody that comes in, you've got some more information up there about where you're located in Geneva, you have a phone number, somebody can call you, do you have an email site that somebody could email you?
Yeah, so the email, there's a couple emails up here, there's my email, that's peter.thaddeus@youth-outlook.org, or you can, it's up at info@youth-outlook.org, and that usually goes to our executive director.
And the, and the place in Geneva they can find you?
They can find, yeah, they can find the Geneva site, there's the Naperville site, Transcend is also another Naperville site, it's transgender-focused. We also have DeKalb, and then we go as far out as Stirling and Ottawa.
Well, people here would be probably from the tri-cities, so what I'm trying to do is get you to say, 102 South Second Street in Geneva.
Yeah. 102 South Second Street in Geneva is where you can find us, Unitarian Universal Society, Geneva.
Well, we needed to get that out, so as I say, it's surprising to me the number of people who are watching this, and, you know, there may be some people very interested in what you're doing here.
Yeah.
We needed to make sure we got some information, because that's the one criticism we've received here over the years about, well, you bring a group in and they talk, talk about themselves, but then nobody tells us how to get ahold of them, or where they're at, or where we can find them, so that's what we're just trying to do.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, Alderman Atech, would you read the proclamation?
Yes, do you have a copy of it?
Yes.
While they're transferring that, can you mention the date and time and place of the pride parade?
The pride parade is Sunday, June 17th, is Father's Day, and it starts at noon, and we're going to have, people can join us, our youth leaders are joining us in the parade, as well as our staff, a lot of supporters.
Can I just say quickly, thank you? I mean, you know, the LGBT youth community, I mean, they're always at a higher risk of suicide, and that, I never heard of you guys before, and I think it's excellent that you do this, and you're letting people, young people trying to find their identities, who they are, and that they're not alone, and they're questioning of themselves and what their futures tend to be. So I really say thank you for all the youth, and I think it's important that, you know, in our society today, that people tend to be more, they should tend to be more inclusive of everyone. LGBT community, race, religion, sexual orientation should not matter if you have a good heart, and we should embrace everyone, so thank you for, for what you, you're doing here. Thank you.
I'd ask Alderman Atech to read the proclamation.
Whereas the rate of homelessness and suicide is disproportionately high in the United States amongst LGBTQ plus youth, many of whom are vulnerable because of feelings of isolation and fear, and whereas Naperville-based Youth Outlook is the first social service agency in Illinois dedicated to supporting LGBTQ youth in six counties of northern Illinois, including Kane and DuPage Counties, and whereas the organization is run by a board of directors and staffed by a handful of dedicated professionals, as well as nearly one hundred trained volunteers and college interns to deliver vital programs, and whereas Youth Outlook has served thousands of young people from Chicagoland area at several drop-in centers, including the Unitarian Universalist Society of Geneva at 102 South Second Street, Geneva, by providing a safe environment for LGBTQ youth to be themselves in the company of their peers, and whereas Youth Outlook works closely with various community groups, businesses, mental health professionals, and gay state alliance, straight alliance clubs at area schools, and whereas Youth Outlook has been recognized by the Human Rights Campaign for Excellence in Service to Young People, and whereas Youth Outlook celebrates its twentieth year of helping at-risk youth in our communities. And now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, by signing this official proclamation, do hereby congratulate Youth Outlook on its twentieth anniversary and its positive impact upon our community. Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor, signed. I move that we approve, the proclamation is read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Chanset, any discussion? Call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye. Proclamation is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. So on behalf of the community and the City Council, I am honored to present this proclamation to you and your organization for your great work and continuing to work for making progress and the focus of the world, so I appreciate very much all you're doing, as does the City Council, and we hope that this can be something that can show the rest of the membership with great pride and admiration for what has been put forth by you. May you have many, many more years of great success than today's ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, moving to item number eleven, which is Resolution 18-64-R Considering Applications for Downtown Improvement Grant for 119 South Batavia Avenue. Who's got this?
I do.
Alderman Stark.
We recently received a request for an economic improvement grant, and for those who don't know, in our downtown area, we have an improvement grant program, which is based on a first-come, first-served, it's a first-come, first-served program, and business owners and property owners are allowed to request matching grants, and so this is a matching grant for the building that is directly adjacent to Beardsguard on Batavia Avenue, and that back block has been recently very well redeveloped between Batavia Family Dental,
Well, that, like I said, that's debatable, so I understand why we're doing it, and are we insured now?
Not yet, until it's in, installed, and probably reviewed by them.
Okay. Well, I understand why we're doing it. I mean, I gotta say, I'll support it, but it's a hard support.
You're involving the state government here, and there's nothing easy about that anymore.
Not anymore, there is not.
Anybody else? Kirk call the roll.
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-55-R, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Batavia Park District for dam signage and lighting.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien?
Callahan.
Callahan, for the approval of Resolution 18-55-R. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, one no, none absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 18-67-R, authorizing execution of agreement between the City of Batavia and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Streets Division. Who's got this one?
Wendy does.
Wendy.
Good evening. Through good faith bargaining, we have reached an agreement with the IBW Streets Division in the city for a one-year agreement. In the memorandum, it's listed as to the agreed amounts and the changes, there aren't very many, but we'll be looking at one-year agreement and then be sitting down in the fall again to discuss negotiations. And so hopefully, at that point, we'll have a better idea of the economics, like we've spoke about in the past, and we'll be getting a longer-term agreement. But the collective bargaining agreement is before you for approval.
Are there any questions or comments? I move we approve Resolution 18-67-R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 196 Streets. Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Resolution 18-67-R, execution agreement between the city and the Streets Division of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is Resolution 18-55-R, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Batavia Park District for dam signage and lighting.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien?
Callahan.
Callahan, for the approval of Resolution 18-55-R. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, one no, none absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 18-67-R, authorizing execution of agreement between the City of Batavia and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Streets Division. Who's got this one?
Wendy does.
Wendy.
Good evening. Through good faith bargaining, we have reached an agreement with the IBW Streets Division in the city for a one-year agreement. In the memorandum, it's listed as to the agreed amounts and the changes, there aren't very many, but we'll be looking at one-year agreement and then be sitting down in the fall again to discuss negotiations. And so hopefully, at that point, we'll have a better idea of the economics, like we've spoke about in the past, and we'll be getting a longer-term agreement. But the collective bargaining agreement is before you for approval.
Are there any questions or comments? I move we approve Resolution 18-67-R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 196 Streets. Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Resolution 18-67-R, execution agreement between the city and the Streets Division of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Resolution 18-67-R is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to 14, which is Resolution 18-68-R, authorizing execution of agreement between the City of Batavia and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Electrical Division. Wendy?
Again, I'll bring to you another agreement, this is a separate agreement, while it's still covered by IBW, but it's the Electrical Division, which covers our line men and crew leaders. It is a one-year agreement as well, and we've reached that through good faith bargaining, and there are a few articles as far as some updates to language and, of course, and then the wage increase. If anyone has any questions about the changes, but I would, we of course recommend for approval.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Your Honor, it's just, again, the thing we sell is our electric utility, and we're very proud of our electric utility and the work that these men do. You know, it's, when there's an issue, you know, there's response in hours, if you had ComEd, there's response in days. And so, it's our utility, they keep it running well, and so kudos to them, so I'd support this. Thank you.
And I would just add on to that comment, I really want to commend Wendy and those in the Human Resources Division for both of these agreements, because these are not something, and it was one who was in here every day, in and out, this took some while to get all this stuff hashed out and discussed, and this was almost word-by-word negotiation here as they went forth, and as it generally is with all city departments, but this really was, you know, I think, well-done on our part, and I'm very proud of the Human Resources Department for putting together what ended up being very little controversy at the end of the day, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk call the roll.
We need a motion. I move we approve Resolution 18-68-R, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the Illinois Brothers of Electrical Workers Local 196 Electric. Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Resolution 18-68-R. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saroun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Thank you, Wendy. Okay, moving to 15, the main event here tonight, Resolution 18-65-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC for solid waste services, option one sticker-based program. That's why. Alderman Wolf.
Just as a quick background on this, the Committee of the Whole directed staff to see proposals from various waste haulers at a meeting this past January. Staff joined together with the City of Geneva and City of St. Charles to develop a request for proposals from tri-city solid waste services. It was thought that this collaboration would result in more favorable prices due to the economies of scale, although separate proposals were required for each municipality. A few changes to the current program included both RFP options that included yard waste collection for the first two weeks of the season without stickers, pricing for electronic recycling based on stickers, optional cost for spring cleanup pricing, the ability for residents to add food scrap items to yard waste, fruits, vegetables, grains, pastas, and then also under option two, residents can place additional refuse items outside the totter without a sticker, while any more refuse items would require a sticker. The additional item can be disposed, dispose a unit of 32-gallon can, one bulk item, one white good, or one butted item, under 50 pounds of household waste, such as carpet, as defined in the proposal. Also included in this option is a 65-gallon yard waste totter with a monthly rental or paper tip, as an additional. This was advertised publicly, and proposals were sought from several waste hauling vendors. The options included option one, which is what we approved at the Cow meeting, is referred to as the volume-based sticker program with recycling totters, and optional refuse totters, which is basically what we have today. And option two was referred to as refuse and recycling totter program. That option would require residents to select a 35, 65, or 95-gallon totter for refuse and pay for those surfaces quarterly at a monthly rate. So, that being said, I'm sure we're going to have some discussion about this. So, who would like to start? I'll start. I have to say, in the amount of time that I've been on the city council, I've never received such one-sided communications from the public, whether it was standing at Jewel, at Pal Joey's, at breakfast, just about anywhere I was in the city, somebody had something to say to me about this. The more I looked at this and the more I thought about this, one, I'm more leaning towards the refuse and recycling totter program than anything, because I think it should be pay-for, pay-for-tip, and then whatever we generate, we actually pay for, which I think is much better for our residents than paying for a sticker, or paying for a piece of equipment that sits in their garage and gets used once in a month. I think that's the way we have to look at eventually going, we'll get there. I do think that there's been a lot of thought that went into this, and I'm sure somebody else will probably back me up, but I'm against us changing vendors at this point. I feel like the company that's provided service for us for the last 15 years has done an exemplary job, because we never hear about it. Our residents don't talk about it, they don't put anything on Facebook, they don't pull us aside anywhere in the community to ever say that anything is wrong. And if they do have something wrong, all it's ever been, or any communication I've ever had, was, what's the phone number, I need to call and tell them how good this person is that's taking care of the mess that we left out in front of our house, or to thank them for coming and picking up something that they missed earlier that day, or, you know, the day before. So, I've just heard good things for the entire amount of time I've been on the city council, and I think it would be a mistake for us to change that at this point.
Alderman Chanset?
I guess I would echo some of those remarks. I, in my eight years here, and, you know, 10 years, as I mentioned, serving as a newspaper reporter, I have never seen the public say, take the second bid. It's unheard of. That said, I voted in favor of the Lake Shore contract in committee, and since being lobbied as much as I have, and getting the email that we all got on Friday, Advance submitted another proposal with lower numbers. Remember that we went out for this process because we were looking to get a good deal for our citizens, and while the second bid was unsolicited, it did show a lower price. Astonishingly, it did not match the price that we've already agreed upon. It was an open-book test, and Advance failed that test because they couldn't come up with a lower number. But that leads me to believe that that might actually be what it costs, and that it is possible that the bid that we did receive might actually be a low-ball bid. I would then change my vote. I agree that I don't think it's right to abandon this provider that has done a good job for the city, I think that they've done their best, and when I have to answer to my constituents, I can say that we got a better deal with a company that no one is complaining about. Thank you.
Alderman Stark?
I have to echo what the two Aldermen before me have said. This has been an interesting process. I don't regularly talk to as many people about one particular topic as I have about garbage in the last week. They overwhelmingly have had only good things to say about Advanced Disposal, including a ringing endorsement from the Chamber, Batavia Main Street, the Park District, our own fireworks committee, we've had terrific dealings with Advanced Disposal. And as I've said many times, you know, stay with the devil you know versus the devil you don't know. We know what we're getting into, and I, the pricing to me, when I received a phone call from the residents of Georgetown, and they said, "Many of us are on a fixed income, but the service is so good with Advanced Disposal, $1 or $2 a month is not going to make a difference in our budget, please stay with Advanced Disposal," I thought, well, yes, it's what I thought all along, but the ringing endorsement of the citizens that I've received made it all the more easy to say, we don't have to go with the absolute rock-bottom bid, that we should stay with the Advanced Disposal bid.
Anybody else on this side? Alderman ATAC?
Well, there aren't many times when you get feedback that we want the city to go with a bid that is not the lowest bid, and that concerns me. It makes me wonder when we get, I think Nick brought this up, what's going to happen when we get to budget time? We have so many infrastructure costs and other costs that we need to reserve money for, and we could do a lot with, the community as a whole could do a lot with the money that we're kind of foregoing if we continue with Advanced Disposal. I appreciate the work that staff has done, they've worked really hard on looking into getting the city the lowest bid possible. I did do a little research, because some of the feedback that I'd gotten was, we want to stay with a local company. Well, when I did my research, I realized that Advance is located in Florida, they have 36 or 3700 employees, they're traded on the New York Stock Exchange, and I think their sales are something like a billion and a half a year. And so, I'm feeling like maybe Batavia's not going to have a real big impact on Advanced Disposal if we don't go with them. And I think that Lake Shore, who put their best foot forward, is a local company, they're located in Morton Grove, and we're about, I believe it's Morton Grove, correct me if I'm wrong, and we're about going local. So, you know, I'm conflicted, I feel like we don't want to spend more than we need to, and all the references suggest that Lake Shore is very competent. So, I don't think that I will be changing my vote, and I will support staying with, or staying with the original, with the proposal that staff has presented.
Alderman Salvati?
My feelings are, I'm just going to repeat what I said last week, and first off, this is a different sort of process than a sealed bid. This is a RFP, and the waste hauler agreements are different in nature. We have an incumbent vendor who has done a wonderful job for us. Given the nature of the RFP, you know, I believe, just in how I do business, when you've done business with someone, developed a relationship with a group of people that have done as great a job as they have, that merits, that merits some, you know, some looks. Appreciate everything that has gone into this, staff has, they have worked their tails off on this. You know, Lake Shore came in with a very, very strong bid, I'm not going to call it a lowball, they could very well be that efficient, they could be. And, you know, and what you're seeing in Advance, you know, with their second proposal coming down, is maybe they were able to, you know, to file it down a little bit, but I heard from two a person, I want you to keep this group. They've done a great job. And they have, they have. And so at the end of the day, we are saving our clients, which are the citizens, money. We're saving them money. So it's not that we can do anything with this money, it's their money. They're saving money, and that is achieved. So that, to me, I'm going to, I would stay, I'm staying with my vote, that, which is, I would not go with Lake Shore, I would, I would like to stay with Advanced.
Alvin Brown?
Well, Your Honor, as you've mentioned many a times in the past, no matter which way we go with this, it'll probably work out just fine, and I do believe it will. I do believe that both vendors are very good vendors, they probably both will give the residents the kind of service that the residents are expecting. So I don't think, whatever decision is made tonight, I don't think it's going to be a bad decision. But with that being said, I agree with everything everybody said. That's all I've heard from people, and I've reached out more than I normally do, and talked to people about what do they think? What, what do you want me to do? I'm struggling with this decision. And I've talked to, as Lucy knows, I try to talk to a lot of the elderly as often as I can, and believe it or not, they even said to me, I didn't have one elderly person that's on a fixed income, or not a fixed income, either way, say, I think you should change. They all said, you should stick with what we have. So that was the input that I was getting from the community, but beyond that, my concern, or my, my thought process here, I guess, is rolling around to, yes, Advance isn't a quote unquote "local" company, they're headquartered somewheres else, but they are a local company, they are a Batavia company. They do have facilities here, they do pay real estate taxes here, they do employ people from Batavia, they do support the community with many, many different events that we've all heard about in many different ways, whether it's to picking up the garbage that I never thought we'd have so much conversation on, to donating towards events with writing a check. So we've got that to consider. We've also got the fact that we have got a company that is our waste hauling vendor that also has a waste transfer station located within our community. And I just think that that needs to be taken under consideration for numerous different reasons why. So I just, you know where my vote was the other night? I've done a lot of thinking on that, and I'm expressing to you right now what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? So Gary, these three communities, though we had separate bids, we bid together, and I'm under the impression that the proposals were made for the three companies to go with the same vendor, is that correct?
Each community will enter into its own separate contract.
But do we have, do we have to all make the same decision? No.
Alvin Rado, you're the one who left in the side of the room before I go over there. Do you have anything you want to say?
Gary, I think the first proposal we received from Advance back in November was a rate increase, and it was conditioned on St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia agreeing altogether.
That was true, correct.
Okay. So that was the reason why I believe we went out for an RFP. We thought we could get a better price. My other thing is, I have talked to a number of citizens over the weekend. I didn't have one person say, yeah, go with the higher bid. So as far as I'm concerned, my vote is not going to change. I think we owe it to our taxpayers to save them as much money as we can.
Side of the room, anybody want to make any comment? Alvin McCallahan?
Just have a question. Do we know, I had heard some numbers about, lots of numbers last week, the fleet for Advanced Disposal, is that 100% compressed natural gas fleet?
I believe the fleet that services Batavia is.
Services Batavia.
Is natural gas, correct?
And Lake Shore?
I would assume they're diesel.
So for me, that's just what I wanted to make sure, because I'm looking at the totality of everything, what, what the prices were, what the, what one community is doing, what another one's doing, but it all came down to, like I said last week, the most advantageous to Batavia. And this will confirm the way I voted last week, because compressed natural gas vehicles are the most environmentally responsible, and we have signed off on agreements for that. So this is a, we're biting, we're continuing the environmental responsible impact already, immediately, versus waiting. I know it's in the contract to replace over a few years, but we should be looking for, what are we changing for? And that goes to weighing the cost, weighing the, the other potential delays in service with other entities, because other cities are receiving the bids with, with Lake Shore, and they made their own minds up about it. But I don't care what the other ones do, I care only about what we're doing, and overall, the only win-win is to go with a lower bid that saves residents money, that the residents actually want to spend their money on. And that's what our jobs are to do, is to represent people and represent them in their choices, so I will remain with Advanced.
Matt Schell?
Yeah, obviously I was on the side of, you know, trying to, as Mike put it, save as much money for our residents as possible. I didn't see a reason to pull back on that. I did appreciate the service that Advanced Disposal has always given our particular house, but yes, since that committee of the whole meeting, I've been flooded with emails, with phone calls, with text messages, and I was very careful to explain the difference in the sticker price. You know, for, for those that are maybe on a fixed income, that are really looking for the sticker price, you know, that 50 cent difference, you know, does that add up for you? Does that make a difference? I wish I could say I agreed with you, Mike, so that I could stay with my original vote, but, you know, the more I got that feedback, you know, and realizing that we are still coming out ahead by staying with Advanced Disposal compared to the current contract, and even thinking about some other things, you know, that I could use to justify it, like our own delivery of reliable and efficient municipal services, we've got that here, and it's, and it's, it's proven. So with that, I too will be reversing where I was with the COW meeting, and I'll be going with Advanced Disposal.
Anybody else?
Yep. I would, first, I'd like to apologize for not being able to be here last week due to work, but I, I too have been getting contacted, not one person, well, every one of the people that contacted me said to stick with Advance. And, you know, so, you know, I'm feeling that's what our constituents want, but as I was weighing this, a couple of things that, you know, came to my mind, the transfer station, that's a big piece, that's a revenue source that, you know, might not be there. But also, you know, this business is a labor-intensive business, and that, you know, I look at the, how low that price is, and I got to wonder, where is that money coming from? Is it because it's going to be cheaper labor? Now, of course, I represent labor, but I always got to look at that, and these people live in the community. The reason that we've had such great service, and no one's complaining, is there's some highly skilled workers doing that work. And if Advance isn't going to do it, new companies coming in that's rapidly expanding, where are these professionals, these skilled labor coming from? And so that raises a big concern with me, is, you know, is that savings produced by, you know, reducing labor costs, but when, in doing that, you reduce the skilled labor, and that's problematic for me. So I will be supporting to continue with Advance.
Alvin?
Yeah, I've actually, you know, talked to some folks that have said, yeah, go with the lowest bid. I think we're getting a lot of phone calls because there's been an aggressive campaign to make a lot of phone calls. The next agenda item, there's aggressive campaigns out there on Facebook to send us phone calls and emails. That's what happens when people do go that route, is they're trying to raise emotions and get people to get on their side. I see where everything's going. I would still go with the lowest bid, because I think that's the right thing to do for everybody. And I also look at the new bid, and nothing was done about lowering the monthly totter cost, and that was a significant savings for 35 to 40% of our residents that are using the totter program right now. Nothing was done. That's really disappointing. They did it with the stickers, and, oh, hey, it's magic, it's the 50 cent savings, 55 cent savings, but it's the $5 a month savings that is, that goes away for anybody using a totter, it's gone, it's the exact same price. So the price isn't really lower, it's a little bit of smoke and mirrors, you're just looking at the first line, it looks really good. So, yeah, I'm sticking with where I was at.
Anybody else? Alvin Strong?
I, the inundation of emails came, if I got 70, that represents 0.251% of the community. And I would guesstimate 99% of them were either employees, families of employees, or members of a special interest group that were getting paid by Advanced. So we need to put that all into perspective. This isn't an overwhelming barrage by the community, this is a PR push, and I think we're opening Pandora's box by allowing this, and like Mark said, the next item, there could have been 1,000 people that say it, and would be like, oh no, this is what's best for the city, you wouldn't listen to it. So we need to not be hypocritical, we need to be consistent, and we need to set precedent for every bid coming forward. So I'm sticking with the low bid and the, what I had originally said, and what's right for the future.
Alvin O'Brien?
Your Honor, thank you. This past fall, you know, the city offered Advance an opportunity to have a no bid, just continue the contract. It's your contract to take, and they raised their rates. And so when we put it out to bid, now it had to be competitive, they lowered their rates. They, I still, I mean, they want the project, and they want the contract, but, you know, Lake Shore wanted it more, Lake Shore came in with a good price. So Advance came back with a third attempt, and they still, the price wasn't, wasn't low enough. I mean, that's really what it comes to. And I agree with everyone who said that Advance has done a fine job, absolutely, no negatives. But there's, you know, we heard from 100 people, 100 emails, you know, see, 2,600, 26,000 people live in our community, so we hear from 100 of them, and as Nick just said, you know, some of it is, needs to be filtered. You know, we have 25,900 and whatever many that are saying, well, you guys take care of it, just represent me well. And that's what we need to do. And so I'm, I, I think, Lake Shore, they've been vetted, I called Laura this week, I was like, what's going on? And she said, we vetted them hard, and they're coming in. I mean, no offense to anybody, not Lake Shore, not Advance, this is just picking up trash. I mean, seriously, I mean, the truck drivers have to be skilled, absolutely, and guys in, in the waste transfer, what they do, I don't even know what they do, but they're operating machinery, and it's important stuff. But again, it's just, I leave, I leave my house in the morning, trash barrels are full, when I come home, they're empty. I mean, if there's a mess on the ground, you call, they come and clean it up. Mostly, there's no mess on the ground. 99.9% of the time, there's no mess. I have to believe Lake Shore will contribute the same amount of effort to, to pick up the trash. So my, my vote is, I'm going to go with the residents of Batavia, the majority of residents, and make sure that they get the best bang for their buck. So I'm going to go with the, the resolution presented.
Mr. Ray?
Alvin McFadden, you're the last one to, you don't have to.
I'll just say that I've been a bit flummoxed by this whole thing. I never in my life would have imagined this would have garnered so much interest from, from the community. And, you know, usually everything you hear is, everything costs too much, we're being nickled and dimed, this and that, and now it's, hey, stick with these people, and you say, you realize that's the option that's going to cost you more money, right? Yeah, and we don't care, which has been an interesting response. And though, like Mike says, you know, that's, and others have pointed out, this is a small portion of the community. I look around my area, and everybody there has a totter, and they may not have said anything to me, but I guarantee you, when their bill goes down, they're definitely not going to be complaining. I think the trash is going to be picked up, I think staff has done a good job vetting And so I look, look around at the people, I got to answer to the people who put me here and vote with them.
Alvin Stark, you had something?
I did. One thing, and I do appreciate the fact that staff did exactly what we asked them to do, and this is that fine art of negotiation. And honestly, if I were in Advanced Disposal's shoes as a sales rep, which I have been for most of my life, and you said, give us your price, you're not competing against anyone, I'd go, hmm, I can make more money, they're not competing against me. And then we said, as a council, no, go out for, get some other prices, and so Advanced Disposal came in lower, and then they came in lower again. That's just the art of negotiation. And it makes total sense, you never give anyone your best and final offer, otherwise you're leaving money on the table, so you just continue to negotiate. It's not something we normally do because we're very heavily involved in a bidding process, but this wasn't a closed bid, this was an RFP. Give us your best price, oh, you can make it lower? Okay, great. So to me, it's a win all the way around. We all sat here and passed around the earth and talked about how we want to be sustainable, and how we want to save energy and reduce our carbon footprint. So we have a waste hauling company that instead of driving diesel trucks around our town, is going to drive around in trucks that have compressed gas. Hmm, that seems like we should talk out of the same side of our mouths on both of that one, on all of that. We talk about local, we have a company who supports so many of our events, who, who sits on the board of our Chamber of Commerce, and we talk about local employees, they have 15 local drivers who service our area, we want to support local employees who shop in our grocery stores and eat in our restaurants. So in my mind, as a council, I have to weigh those things into my decision. Someone asked me today, an esteemed member of the city council said, when it comes to this next item on the agenda, depending on how many emails you get, would you flip your vote? The answer to that is no. And the reason is, is because we have, in our hearts and minds, we have a narrative that we want to hear. And so when people write to me and say, this is the best company, stay with this company, that's the narrative that I already had going, and it just backs up my opinion. And so that's how I feel about this one. Did we get an overwhelming response from the entire community? No. But in my heart and in my mind, I know that staying with Advanced Disposal for me and the residents that have contacted me is the best choice.
Your Honor, just one, one, I guess I don't mean to be a rebuttal, but, you know, we gave Advance the opportunity to give us their best price, and, and we had a 15-year relationship with them, and I believe they blew it. I mean, I mean, because we had a relationship, so you don't try to get, I know it's business, but I deal in business also, I deal in millions of dollar construction projects, okay, multi-millions, and you have to have some trust, and we trusted it for the best price, didn't come through, not that they tried to skirt us, but they could have given us a better price, and I just think that's, they blew it, that's just how I see it. I personally, Michael O'Brien, if, if, my family would benefit going with Advance, because I'm a senior, and so we would benefit going with Advance, but I don't believe it's best for the community of Batavia to go, to go that route. Not that it would be bad to go to Advance, they've been excellent, but I think monetarily, it's, it's Lake Shore, and that's, I'm voting what I think is best.
Alvin McCallahan?
I think this is kind of like the wastewater treatment plant. We're spending 60, 80 million dollars on that, and we don't have anybody yelling and screaming about that. Why? Because it is ultimately an essential service that we are providing. Nobody wants to get rid of their sewage, there's no place for it. That's why we're hearing from our residents about it in a positive way, because it's That's why we're hearing from our residents about it in a positive way because it's an essential business that needs to be done. Because I can guarantee, we put a, how many, how many mayors have been taken down by strikes by garbage? You did, you take away those, you go against the quality of life. And quality of life, people know what they want. And in this, they're saying who they want.
There, you're talking fear. We're not getting rid of the service to save a few dollars. We're replacing it with a vetted, well-vetted company. It's apples to oranges.
But we're also talking about the residents know who they've been using. There was also emails that we received that had a prior contract that wasn't so great. So, they have voiced. It hasn't been all roses in what they've wanted all this time. They did say when they had bad service, and they've had, they've said when it is good service. And I can say that reaching out to people, I don't think it's just a small amount. I have heard and seen individuals who have said, go with the lowest bid. So, it's not been that it's 100 to none, but overwhelmingly, people have reached out. And it's just also talking to my neighbors going, what do you think? They weren't called. They weren't lobbied. They're not paid lobbyists, and they all had the same opinion.
Alderman Rosati?
This, what was the thing that, we really haven't talked about too much, and we've alluded to it, kind of the devil you know, devil, devil you don't, which is a horrible analogy.
Hey!
Anyway, but, but there's, there's some things in my mind that, that I think we need to pay attention to in this situation. And Lake Shore is aggressively growing, which is wonderful. That's fantastic. They have the potential of pulling in several new contracts at the end of June, which is also wonderful for them. That is fantastic. But in my mind, that could be a red flag for Batavia. Only because, you know, they, they have money, which is fantastic. They've got new, they've got new trucks, that's great. But there's logistics. And I think whenever you make a, a change like that, there's a significant chance for a dropped ball. And, you know, and so, I hope they succeed. I hope you do wonderfully. I really do. I mean, that's, that's fantastic. But my, there's, there's some, there's a gray area there for me that I get concerned about, just because there's the potential for, for logistical issues. Real potential for logistical issues with a company that's growing that fast. And again, wonderful, fantastic. But I also wanna err to the side of conservatism when it comes to getting rid of our refuse, working with, with the wonderful people that we know and have done a great job.
15 years ago, people probably said the same thing. They were scared to change. Turned out to be a great thing.
Sure.
It probably came in with a lower price, too.
Alderman Rosati?
Yeah. I would like to say something as well. As far as the construction of wastewater treatment plant, I believe we went with the lowest bids. And also, when we do have other bids from other companies, and the Batavia company comes in second or third, we don't sit there and say, hey, this is a Batavia company, let's go with the higher bid. So, I, I'm just not getting a lot of logic out of this. We do represent the people, and I, I really don't think that there's a lot of people, if you go out and gauge conversation, that they're gonna say, yes, I wanna pay the higher price. I think the whole reason why we went to RFP is because this was spurred by Advance. And I agree with you, Mike. Advance spurred this RFP because they were increasing their rates, and that's why we're in the position we're in today.
All right. I think everybody in the council's had their moment. Let me just take a couple, 'cause I have comments to make. I'm gonna take a little bit different track than what the rest of you have talked about here, 'cause I started thinking about this in kind of a different line. As, as everybody in the council knows, I have the, I'll call it the honor of the moment of being the longest-serving mayor in office in the state of Illinois. I'm tied for that honor with another gentleman, but I am the longest-serving guy. And because I've been around so long, I have a couple of roles that you also know about. I serve as the chairman of Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Council of Mayors, which allows me to get to know almost every mayor in the area because we're the ones that handle and program all the federal transportation dollars. So, everybody wants to know me. I have that great opportunity. And I also serve, I was, I served my term as the chairman of the Chicago Mayor's Caucus, Chicago Metropolitan Area Mayor's Caucus, and so, I sit on their executive board. So, in the past week and a half, I've been into Chicago. Most of our meetings are at Willis Tower. I've been in there three times in the last 10 days. And so, this gave me the opportunity. I, I got a list of who the cities were that Lake Shore had as their clients. And so, I, you know, I knew who many of these mayor were, that mayors were. They knew me. There was one mayor that is, that I know very well. I don't wanna start naming mayors here, but I would tell you, he's a very honorable, well-known gentleman in the area. Lake Shore is one of, serves his community. So, I approached him last week and said, you know, I got this company that's bidding in my town. What's your opinion? He says, they're outstanding. Says, I'm really pleased they're in my town, et cetera, et cetera. He gave them a really great recommendation. So, you know, you walk away from something like that. This guy wouldn't spook me or send me in the wrong direction. He was trying to tell me his honest opinion. So, I, you know, I, I came back with a positive impression of Lake Shore, and, you know, then we got into the meeting the other night. And the thing that started coming out at me was, as you found out, and I began to hear it, and when the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street and all those folks got up to speak, the one thing that really started hitting me in the head was the number of events that all of us on this council take a lot of pride in, that we put on throughout this year in this community. And that's things like the party in the park, and most of us are at the party in the park. And then, there's the farmer's market on Saturday morning. And then, there's the Fourth of July fireworks program, which is the biggest event we do in town every year. And then, we have Windmill City Days. We have Oktoberfest. We have the Halloween parade. We have Santa Claus arriving with the Christmas concert down here. And we have the Flag Day, Ice Cream Social. We've got a lot of stuff going on here, and every one of those things generates one heck of a lot of trash. And I find out that our friends at Advance Disposal are right there, moment by moment, seemingly picking up all that trash. Now, as near as I can find here at the moment, we don't get much billing from them for this. They're doing this out of a kind of a community relations thing that they're here to, so, you know, we start figuring up how much stuff is costing. I think we should probably somehow or another, if suddenly Waste Disposal wasn't part of the community, you know, who would be writing all those checks to pay for all this stuff that we do? I just, Saturday mornings over there on River Street at the farmer's market, it's amazing to me the amount of how quickly all the trash cans fill up. And certainly, this now thing where we have the big, long dinner table on River Street one day a year, the trash that comes out of that thing. And again, Advance Disposal has been right there to kinda clean us up and keep us honest and keep the town healthy. So, I, I gotta give them a lot of big points for that. But the thing that I'm gonna hang my hat on here tonight is nothing to do with either Lake Shore or Advance Disposal. I just wanna talk about the city of Batavia for the last six months and some of the things that have happened and some of the things that I'm being told about. You know, one devastating blow that we experienced here about, I don't know, six, eight weeks ago, was we all got up one morning and with no warning at all, we get told that Sam's Club has locked their door today and they're leaving Batavia. And we still don't know what the ultimate demise of that was, why it happened. We had a conversation with Bentonville, Arkansas about it, and it was near, I kinda gathered after I got off the phone that they kinda told me they didn't like competing against themselves, where they had a Walmart and a Sam's Club right next door to each other. And if you looked at the other places in Illinois where they closed up, every one of them was kinda the same as Batavia. They were kind of right next to each other. That seems to be the reason. I don't know if I think that was a good enough reason because, you know, we were getting the sales tax reports out, and I'm not, there's confidential agreement the city signed, and I can't start name, numbering names or naming numbers here, but they were doing very well out there. I mean, I, it's amazing to me that they chose to close that store down. But what that did is, our budget took one heck of a hit. And Peggy and I have been talking about this for the last three days as to what that hit was. And we're still not really sure because, you know, at the end of the day, when they were closing down, they were having all these sales, and everything in the place was going up for sale. So, they generated a lot of sales tax. So, sales tax in Illinois runs about three months behind. When the sale takes place, you kinda get to find a number. So, we're still waiting to see what the bad news is going to be when we finally get the report that Sam's Club's revenues are no more flowing into Batavia. But I think Peggy and I are pretty much of the opinion that this could be a $400,000, $500,000 hit to the city of Batavia at the end of the day here. I mean, that's something we're gonna have to absorb into our budget. Then, kind of increase my angst here. I went to Chicago last Friday and spent the entire day at the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus meeting, and because I'm the past chairman, I'm the, on the executive board, so I had a morning meeting and an afternoon meeting. And when I get in there, the heavy gossip in the room is, is we've, we've hired lobbyists that hang around down in the halls in the state capitol, and we're trying to get a handle on what the state budget's gonna do and what impacts it's gonna have on us. And the heavy rumor that came out of the room I was in at Willis Tower on Friday was, is that there's a supposition out there that the cities in Illinois better be prepared to take about a 10% further reduction in the LGDF fund from the state government. And if you look at what our LGDF monies are in Batavia right now, they're about $2.5 million in round numbers. 10% on that is about another $250,000 a year that we potentially are not gonna see in our budget for next year. So, as I sit here and I'm doing the math in my head, that's $500,000 from Sam's Club. Now, I'm gonna get another $250,000 from the state government 'cause they need the money for whatever it is they think they're doing. And then, I get into the waste transfer station in Batavia. And what does that mean to us? So, needless to say, I really bend over and publicly thank Peggy for her outstanding abilities to get me all this information, but she gave me all the sheets here of what the waste transfer station was generating for our budget in this town over the last five, six years. And I'm not gonna get into individual years, but the waste transfer station out there on Hubbard Avenue is generating someplace between about $520,000 and $595,000 a year. Now, I think we have to ask ourselves, you know, Waste Disposal gets taken out of the mix here, and they're the ones that currently are running that transfer station. And the gentleman from Lake Shore who's out in the audience tonight was kind enough to get up at the meeting the other day and say, well, if they took it over, they'd keep using our waste transfer station, which was a nice gesture on his part. But then, along with that goes all these other contracts that Advance Disposal has of people bringing in stuff to that waste transfer station, which is adding to this, helping us reach this $500,000 plus mark every year. So, you know, basically, with these three accounts that I just talked to you about, you know, we're talking maybe $1,250,000 that potentially is at risk in our budget if we keep, you know, all this stuff keeps happening to us. And so, I guess I'm, I'm supportive of the idea that I think I need to err on the side of what I, what I got here, and that's Waste Disposal, because they are running that waste transfer station very responsibly. They are generating a lot of money for us. And how this whole thing flushes out, you know, I think there's probably a possibility, you know, Geneva and St. Charles may go in a different direction, and maybe their waste will go someplace else. But against, again, Advance Disposal seems to have been able to go out and find other contracts to bring into Batavia to use in our, to use the facilities in our plant out there. And so, I mean, that's a golden goose for Batavia for the revenue. And boy, you take that one out of, out of the mix down here, and we're gonna be talking about, well, folks, we gotta go out and raise the property tax. Or, well, folks, we gotta go out and probably cut, you know, a whole bunch of city, full-time city employees out of their jobs. And those of you who are with me here in 2008 may remember when we had the big national crash and what a destit, undesirable situation we had when suddenly we were telling all these well-used city employees that, well, we had a job for you here, but we just can't afford you anymore, so thank you in this light. So, that was a situation I would encourage you all not to want to try to repeat. So, I guess that's my little speech here, is the fact that, you know, that waste transfer station out there is a valuable golden goose to this town. And, you know, that didn't come without a lot of anticipation and anxiety and opposition. And I've already shared that with you at the last meeting, but we went through a lot of people that didn't want that out there. And the way it's been run, its way it's been managed, and I give Advance Disposal a big amount of credit here. I mean, they've kept that thing on the straight and narrow, so we don't have the neighbors calling us about rats coming over into their property. We don't have people complaining about the junk lane on Kirk Road going all the way down to the tollway interchange by the outlet mall because they go out, I don't know how often now, and pick up every piece of litter whoever generated. You know, Kirk Road from Hubbard in Batavia down to 88 Farnsworth is one of the cleanest stretches of road in the northern part of the state of Illinois because they're out there all the time cleaning it. And I cite that as just a good example, and, you know, I don't get calls from people saying, well, as the opponent said when we first did it, it's gonna smell, it's gonna smoke, it's gonna bring down my property value, it's gonna do all these horrible things. None of that ever seemed to have happened. And, you know, what has happened is, they're running a very responsible business out there. And so, I really give them a lot of credit for what they've done to try to maintain a quality operation in our town. So, that's my two cents on this situation. And I certainly have nothing but the very best of things to say for Lakeside. I think they've certainly proven themselves to others in the region, and I wish them very, very much success in the days ahead. And, you know, maybe there'll be another bidding opportunity in Batavia for them at some point in time if, in fact, you vote now to award this to Advance. But I've had the city attorney, he's almost been working full-time for me for the last three days because we've been asking all kinds of questions. I've had him review the waste transfer documents. I've had him review the waste transfer finances. I've had him review all the various ins and outs of what's going on here. And so, he's up to snuff if we have to get into this. But, you know, I, I think I would ask the city attorney for a recommendation. The motion we have on the floor for 18 is Resolution 1865R, authorizing execution of a contract with Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC for solid waste services, option number one, sticker-based program. Now, we don't want to do that. Those who are opposed to it should vote no. And then, we do another motion after this? Is that what you would suggest? How would you suggest we handle this?
Well, that, obviously, that's what's on the agenda. And, but the motion could be made in the positive or the negative. It's whoever makes the motion.
So, we could change that motion and say?
There's been no motion yet.
Pardon?
There's been no motion.
Right. Right, at the sub-
I'm just reading it off the agenda.
Right, the subject matter is on there stated in the positive. But the, the key under the Open Meetings Act is that we have the subject matter on the agenda, and then we can vote on it. It doesn't necessarily require someone to make a positive motion for it.
So, how, how would you recommend that we proceed?
Well, I don't know that it makes a difference one way or the other, especially listening to how everybody has explained their votes. I think people seem to have gravitated toward a position one way or the other.
But I don't have a resolution written right now that authorizes execution of a contract with Advance Disposal, do I?
We don't, correct.
So, you would need a motion asking for that?
Well, I, I think because we have a motion on the agenda, we have to deal with that first.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, correct.
You should vote on what's on the agenda, and that's the motion that I'll make, is that we approve Resolution 1865R, authorizing execution of a contract with Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC for solid waste services, option one, sticker-based program.
Second. We have motion, Alderman Wolf, second, Alderman Chansett.
Can we discuss? I have a question.
Sure.
Since you said, Kevin is vetted on the transfer station contract. Does Geneva and St. Charles use it today?
Yes, currently.
Okay.
But if they go with somebody else, they're, they could very well go to another transfer station.
Right. So, chances are, if we stick with Advance, they'll, because it's different than who they're using, they will probably go to a different transfer station. Is that?
I mean, I don't know. I think that's a wild card in the room. It's very possible.
I would say what-
I wanna just put it out there because we were, it was presented as if we'll get more business by going with Advance at the transfer station, but the, not necessarily, and it might take away our two biggest neighbors. So, just wanna put that out there.
I would just say, the history has been that Advance has brought in other customers, so, you know, you lose some, you-
Well, and that's business, just like if they lost this contract here, they would go get it somewhere else. I mean, that's business, so, I get it. I mean, that's business, so I get it.
Right, and it's gonna be whoever carries for whatever cities are around here, whatever makes the most sense for them to cart it to the closest place to dump it, so their packer trucks are only making so many miles a day. It wouldn't make sense for them to go 50 miles out of their way to wherever they're based today to dump. They would do it as close as they can to where they're using them.
No, but if the transfer station's in a community that refuses to collaborate, when...
Are you insinuating decisions are based on spite?
Your Honor. Just a point of clarity, should that motion be denied, which would mean then that Lake Shore wouldn't be awarded the contract, I would assume then that there would be another motion made to award the contract to Advance with the option one, is what I'm gonna assume. But there was another proposal, I'll call it, that was sent out on Friday. So could that proposal be a part of that motion, so that then Advance would be bound to that proposal that they sent out on Friday, that we didn't have an opportunity to discuss at Cow?
I think if we're gonna go that route, that the second proposal should be made known.
Right, I think that needs to go to Cow, and I think it needs to go back to another city council meeting before we were to vote on it, because I think the corrected, whatever the numbers are, and whatever the contract needs to be, needs to be at one Cow meeting before it goes to council. I'm not comfortable in changing and making that motion tonight.
Alan, I don't think, I don't think you wanna do that, because if you, no, hear me out. If you, if you vote down Lake Shore, and then you send it back to Cow, that is leaving the floor wide open for anything and everything to happen.
Agreed.
And we don't wanna be put in that position.
So then are we all comfortable with the email that we got last Friday, allowing us to have time to agree with the numbers that were in that second proposal?
I don't think we're all comfortable, I think eight of us are comfortable.
Okay.
Does the contract even matter? You're going with what the neighbors want you to go with, right?
No, I'm going with what I think is the most responsible bid that was given to the city. And just so that everybody is also aware, whoever's the waste hauler in Batavia has to use the waste transfer station in Batavia, regardless of who owns it and regardless of who the carrier is. They have to do it.
That was part of the RFP.
Yes, well, that's a part of the citing agreement for that, because that was one thing that we knew. I mean, we've had, who originally built the waste transfer station? It was On-X.
On-X.
So there's been On-X, Veolia, and then Advance. So there's been several companies that have owned it. So regardless of who carries and who owns the two, they have to use that transfer station.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in second for the approval of Lake Shore Recycling Systems for solid waste services, option one sticker-based program. Any further discussion? Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
No.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Oh.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chanset?
No.
Vote is six aye, eight no.
Yep.
Okay, what's our next motion we wanna make?
I'll make the motion that we approve an amended Resolution 1865-R to award the solid waste services, option one sticker-based program contract with Advanced Disposal, and including the prices per the email that was sent to the city council on Friday.
Second.
I'm sorry, I think we should add to that, just for clarity, that it would be pursuant to the same terms that were in the RFP.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's probably assumed or implied, but I'd like it to be stated.
That's why I said it just, the only differences would be that Lake Shore would be replaced with Advanced, and then the numbers that would be in it for costs would be from the email from Friday.
Do you have all that?
I have it recorded.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So I guess what we're saying is, Advance has given the city three prices, and we're going with the last price.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and Lake Shore is out of the picture completely, because it's the last vote.
Okay. Okay. Wait.
Your Honor. Alderman. So like we did last week, we were talking about staff trying to negotiate us to a tip, a pay per tip, and for the toters for refuse. And we need to be aggressive on that, because that's the whole thing that's gonna make it better for everybody, it's the whole thing that makes them more efficient, the prices should drop dramatically, and I'm, like I said, I'm extraordinarily disappointed that they did nothing on the toter. So they did nothing to reduce that price. Again, 35% to 40% of the people in this town are seeing no reduction in cost. So something needs to be done more to work towards that program. So we're using that RFID, because that's just, that's the way to go. If we're gonna do what's right, that's the way to go.
Valman, Chanset.
During that proposal, they did say that they already have the chips enabled in the bins, right?
They did, however, in discussions, they've not had success using that system, so that needs to be fixed. And I would expect a multi-billion dollar organization to be able to figure out a programming issue to figure out how to make it work.
So we can certainly give direction to staff that if there are ongoing negotiations to get it, get those chips into play with an updated contract, we would certainly entertain that in the future.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on the motion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
No.
Seron?
Nope.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
No.
Atak?
No.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Ten yes, four no.
So that one is approved, ten yes, four no.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that one, or any other further actions? Alderman, Wolf?
No.
Okay. All right, moving to the next main event. Ordinance 18-29, amending ordinance 17-15 for a major amendment to a planned development overlay district for one Washington Place, between 111 and 133 East Wilson Street and 20 North River Street, and one North Washington LLC applicant. Who's got this one? Alderman, Brown?
Yes, I have it. I actually would defer to Laura. Laura, is there any additional information that we need to know about regarding soil mitigation or anything, any discussions?
Can we just hold up a little bit, as the people can leave, please?
Sure.
So on Friday, we met with a representative from the environmental consulting firm who produced the report regarding the soils that need to be removed from the project, and they are going to be submitting to us a work change order to include the next steps that need to be taken, to get a more exact estimate of the amount of remediation that's necessary to create a remediation plan, and let us know with more specificity exactly how much this is going to cost. But we did have that meeting on Friday morning, and so we got the ball rolling on that, and we're just waiting to go through that process.
So may I just ask, can you repeat that question, please?
Sure, I can. My question to Laura was, do, is there more information that we have now about the mitigation of the contaminated soil underneath the parking garage and up the hill behind it that could potentially influence our decisions on this motion, or ordinance, over planned overlay? And she said she's waiting to get information back, so we don't currently know the cost of any of this.
Right, I heard a response, I didn't know what the question was.
Yeah, so that said, then I would ask the question, is it the right time to make any decisions on this, or should we wait until we have more information?
I think the two are independent of one another, because the remediation costs are certainly a potential off-ramp from the RDA, exclusive of whether or not you approve zoning.
Okay.
Right, and the way the agreement is read, they're independent in that fashion, and we will, we will deal with the environmental issue, depending upon what that number is, independently, and that could be an issue that might undermine the project on its own, perhaps.
Thank you.
So, Alderman? I don't know if it's necessary or not as part of this conversation, but what is our obligation, now that we know that there's, the soil is bad? We have to do it no matter what? Or do we, if we don't disturb it, we're okay? Or what, what's our obligation to do this?
Right, so you're treading a little bit beyond my focused expertise, but from what I understand, if we don't disturb the ground, nothing changes. But if we're gonna do something with that site, then we're gonna have to deal with that environmental stuff in the ground. We don't know yet whether we can keep it on the ground. That could be an option, that, you know, sometimes you can, as long as there's an engineered barrier, you can build over it, as long as you don't disturb it. You might be able to move it on-site, but we might also have to move it off-site. So we don't know yet what that looks like, and we won't know until we get the environmental estimate on what the options are for us to deal with it.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Chanset.
Either way, it's our obligation, Shodine made it clear during committee that they will not.
No, I understand that, but if we choose to do nothing with the project, and somebody else came up with a design that then, hey, that parking garage stays, and it's like, okay, good.
I tried to picture a design that looks like that as well, too. It might not be as much of a monstrosity, but I don't think that there's a way to integrate the existing parking deck. We probably have to disturb that soil.
But there's other soil nonetheless, I mean, with the old Service Master and, I believe, northeast corner, so it's parking deck and other areas.
Laura, did you have something you wanted to add?
It was exactly the point that Alderman and O'Brien just made, that there are other areas on the site that also will require remediation, and that northeast corner is perhaps the worst spot under that parking lot.
Anybody else?
And I think, you know, to realize that regardless of what happens, say it's a big enough dollar amount to remediate what's there, there's no way we're ever gonna get anything else built over there if we don't do something about it. So I think we have to kind of put our minds in the set that we are going to have to do something with it, and, you know, whatever gets built over there, that's gonna have to change.
There's another positive, if you wanna look at it that way, and that is, since we own the property, there is grant money available to us for cleanup that might not be available to a private entity. So that's a positive.
That Brownfield financing.
Well, back to the ordinance at hand, because we kind of went around it, and now we're coming back to it. So the ordinance 1829 amends ordinance 1715 that approved a planned development overlay for one Washington Place development. And the primary changes that we discussed at committee of the whole were the garage geometrics and heating. And at committee of the whole, we recommended that the geometrics, we discussed a plan that showed parking that would give the best geometrics based on simulations that staff had run in a parking study in that building. And we gave recommendations in that way. And then we also addressed whether or not the garage should be heated. And we approved the recommendations and the change of ordinance by a vote of seven to six at the Cow, and that's how it got to hear us here at city council. And attached to the staff recommendation that they sent to us, there's an email from the applicant, Dave Petzel, accepting the Cow's recommendation of an additional condition of approval. And so I make a motion that we approve ordinance 1829, amending ordinance 1715 for a major amendment to a planned development overlay district.
Second. Moved by Alderman, Stark, Second Valman, McFadden, for the approval of ordinance 1829, amending ordinance 1715 for a major amendment to a planned development overlay district for one Washington Place. Any further discussion? Alderman, Callahan?
I know this keeps getting talked about as the conditioning of the garage and the parking spaces, but ultimately, this is about the removal of the commercial, and that's why this is the major change. This isn't a major change, because it's gonna be conditioned. We need to remember that the actual thing that we're voting on is the reason why Shodine went six to, not eight million dollars over to begin with, and this is the full circle on that. So I wanna make sure that we're not losing sight of the actual change that we're doing with this, rather than talking about and focusing on the conditioning and the tweaking of the parking.
Just so we're clear, too, and that's correct, but the, whatever the amount that they went up did not affect our bond. I mean, the only thing that affected our bond is the success of the project. We would've had to pay incrementally the added $2 million to get to 16. Now it's part of that deal, that we have to pay it non-incrementally, regardless of the success of the project. And that is all that's been done to the bond. So again, the bond stands as is, and there'll be no cost to Batavia residents at all, because it will all be paid through the TIF district. And so, so we keep that clear. And regarding, my understanding of it is, is, you know, we're losing 8,000 square feet of retail, but I still believe firmly that if we build this project and we bring people in to our downtown to walk around the streetscapes that we've provided for them, to make it more of a walkable city, that people will walk in our downtown, and retail will follow, because retail follows the walkers. And so I think this is still gonna be a good show for the city of Batavia and a wise investment.
Other comments? I guess we could call the roll then on the motion.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
No.
Seron?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
No.
Atak?
Aye.
Seven.
Seven to seven?
Seven, seven.
I vote aye.
So what, none of us can ever be absent?
No, not tonight.
I got 20 emails this week, so I had to listen to that, right? Not one was for it.
You're on.
I'm on? I'd like to thank everybody. Let's talk about something completely different.
Non-controversial.
All right, how about if I thank you for your participation in the strategic planning meeting last Monday? I think that we had a lot of very good discussion, and so I wanna hold our next planning, strategic planning discussion on June 11th, again, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. I sent out the invitation for that earlier today, where we'll be taking a look at the SWOT analysis that we perfected in the last meeting, and hopefully take that and turn them into some concrete goals for our future. In community and economic development, we are seeing a tremendous amount of activity, some vacant spaces that are, I hear, in negotiation, quite near to being leases, and once that happens, I can share with you exactly who those new businesses are. But there's been a lot of exciting activity like that out there. Plan Commission is going to be holding hearings for variances on some property at 1107 North Avenue for a fence, and 836 Garfield for a garage setback. You know, people are doing additional work on their homes as well, and remodeling and making improvements. The HPC also heard and approved a certificate of approval for windows at 12 North River Street. And staff has met with representatives of the Windmill Landings Project to discuss any of the last remaining outstanding items that need to be submitted, and a tentative meeting scheduled to get that project... I'm sorry. We're moving forward with our plan to install a temporary motor and pump in well number six. You'll recall at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, we shared that we've had to sort of reprioritize those projects because the pump in well six was in far worse shape than we had anticipated, and we're waiting for the permanent replacement to be manufactured. The City Hall windows and masonry contractor has begun to mobilize so that they are ready to begin that project on June 1st. And that's it. I shared with you our meeting with the environmental consultants. Does anybody have any questions for me about any ongoing projects? Alderman Stark?
I just want to thank you for implementing a fast knowledge system for the City Council so that we're alerted. It was, it was great, even though it wasn't wonderful things we were alerted about, it was really nice to know what was going on ahead of press releases and things like that so that we were prepared for questions. I really appreciate getting those texts and knowing just kind of a heads-up, this is what's happening. So thank you for that.
We'll do our best.
And thank you also, I have to say, one of the rare times that the power has gone off in our part of town, and I heard it go, I heard it pop, and I knew it was going to be bad, but electric service had it back on again within an hour and a half, and I was amazed. I didn't think it was possible.
I know.
And we have just the most reliable service, electric service. It is, I can't speak highly enough about the small number of people we actually have, because you always think of our electric utility as something huge. And there's not that many people who are taking care of our entire city, and they do such a phenomenal job, so.
Gary, is it seven people?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen people.
But thirteen people for a city of 27,000, so.
Did we answer that for you, Gary? Honestly, it was, I never realized how small the staff was until Wendy was negotiating the contracts and said, this is how many people we have on our electric utility. I was shocked, and it's, they do such a great job.
They really do. Thank you very much.
This morning, Laura and I and Chief Yule and Deputy Chief Mazza had a meeting with the folks that are running the triathlon. Do you want to quickly just talk about that for a moment?
Sure. We met with Joe LaPresto this morning, who is the organizer of our wonderful Batavia triathlon. I believe that he said this is the 15th year of the running of the Batavia triathlon. We know that they have hundreds of participants in that race. What makes it kind of a challenging event from the city's perspective is the bike portion, and trying to make sure that everyone is safe out there on a bike course, in particular when it gets out of our downtown and, and onto roads where the automobiles are going 50 miles an hour, and the elite bikers are going, you know, close to 30 miles per hour while they're racing. To try to maneuver people through intersections and still try to cause the least disruption to the traffic flow really poses a severe logistical, and, you know, we have to have safety as our utmost concern. We became aware that there's construction on Main Street. The race is in about three weeks' time, and the Kane County is not sure whether they're going to be able to complete that roadwork in time. But the race organizer met with city staff to talk about alternative safe routes that could be used instead as a contingency plan. So it was some, some good coordination between both the race organizers and also our police department in making sure that we do everything we can to keep the participants safe.
The one thing I just wanted to make mention of is, is that when all these races started 15 years ago, we had some consternation from the church community on Sunday mornings about, specifically when we let the race get near Main Street between, say, Deer Path Road east to Water Street. And that was a major point of consternation. And so we now have, with the aid of the police department, they have worked it out so that we've got, nobody's running in front of the church anymore.
Right.
We may be running west of it, but we're not running right in front of it, so everybody can get in and out, hopefully with no consternation. And the other nice thing about this is, is that they've moved all their operations and their starting and their finishing of the running part of it down to the VFW on South River Street. And that's a nice shot in the arm for the VFW to have all that business. They've got a liquor license on Sunday morning, so I don't have to deal with this having beer in the park down here at 6 o'clock in the morning and all this other great stuff, because they can legally do it down at the VFW, and they use their facilities, and the VFW makes money. And so it's turning into a pretty positive thing. We've obviously had some stops and starts, and we've had to kind of reinvent it in a couple of areas of the community, but I think it's working a lot better than it did previously. And I just wanted to commend the police department and Laura and her administration for kind of working through some of the hard parts of this, because there were a few moments that were kind of delicate, and especially when people were trying to get to church, and they were getting there 25 minutes late because they got stopped by a pack of racers that they had to wait to get out of the street before they could get into their church type of thing. And we had that for a while, but that's all gone now. So we're, we're pleased that we got that much cooperation. So thank you.
Sure.
So Laura, I have a quick question for you, and this isn't looking to assign blame or put you on the spot. I really just want to understand what, what went on. Why did we RFP and not get for the waste transfer or the waste, the solid waste disposal? Why didn't we do a closed bid?
Kevin may be able to comment on some of that, too. It has to do with the nature of, of solid waste contracts and also our joint, together with St. Charles and Geneva. And so I think probably all the...
Garbage bidding is not subject, or garbage collection is not subject to bidding.
Okay. I mean, I just, because I thought it caused an awful lot of discussion, and it could have been a simple thing, but I, I don't understand why that is, but that's the law.
It's not, it's, it's not a public work...
It's a service.
...or improvement.
Yeah.
Correct. So it's not covered under bidding.
And the way St. Charles explained it was, it also wasn't any expenditure of city funds, because the funding for it comes from the users, not the city.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
Sure. I didn't do any. Thanks, Gary. And Kevin.
Thanks, all around.
Anything else for Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going to committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow evening's Committee of the Whole meeting starts at 7:00, and there's 13 items on the agenda. A few of them for the community development portion will be a couple ordinances which will allow for MetroNet to locate at 605 East Fabian Parkway. And then we also have three ordinances that will allow for an expansion down at the Funway Amusement Center on South Route 25 down there. We also then go on, and we've got a request of a transfer of certain parcels for the Batavia Park District, and then a resolution, 1859, will be authorizing the transfer of the property for Batavia Park District. Moving on, we go to ordinance 1831 proposing establishment of a special service area number 62 for Batavia Main Street. And then we have resolution 18-60 accepting a plat of dedication for a portion of Wintergreen Terrace. Next item will be ordinance 18-38 annexing and zoning 511 Pine Street. And then the last one for community development will be discussion on the One Washington Street, or One Washington Place State Street design options that we didn't get to with the last Committee of the Whole due to the hour of the meeting. And that's all we have for community development. There is no Plan Commission scheduled. The next Committee of the Whole is supposed to be on May 29th, but we have no items, and I don't believe we're planning on having a meeting on that evening. So that's it for this month. That's all I have.
Give me that address again for MetroNet, 605?
605 East Fabian Parkway. It's going to be...
It's on the north side of the street. It's in Geneva.
It's on the north side of Orion.
It's on Orion Street, actually, but the address is 605 East Fabian Parkway.
Yeah, it's, it's, the parcel is bounded by Fabian, Nagel, and Orion. So it's the southwest corner of that parcel, so.
But five violates our city code on house num, our street numbering, because you've got an odd number on the south side of the street.
We'll verify that number if that's right, because that might be an older number.
It should be 606, but it shouldn't be 605.
Right.
Because the odds are on the north side of the street.
Right. It could also be that it's maybe a Nagel address or an Orion address, too, so we'll verify.
Something there that's not working.
Yep.
The fire department's going to get all lost and upset about that, so we don't want to do that this month.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman Wolf?
We don't have anything on the agenda for the rest of the month.
Well, you guys are talking talk here now.
You have right in the middle.
We do. I...
You have one right in the middle.
Oh, okay.
Authorizing the mayor to execute a licensing agreement.
Yes, with Fox Valley Patriotic Organization. I am sorry. So that's tomorrow night.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
I have only one thing now that we've taken the garbage out. Tomorrow night, we have a change order to the City Hall windows and masonry project.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, we have nothing for the rest of the month.
All right. Do we have other business from the council? Alderman Callahan?
I just wanted to bring up something that you normally take great pride and joy in doing, that I was honored to do for you this weekend.
Thank you.
I just want to publicly congratulate Jacob Barth, Ryan Preer, and Logan Cannon, who became Batavia's newest Eagle Scouts. And I presented the proclamations from them from you. So I congratulated them on behalf of City Council and the community of Batavia. And then, secondly, on Memorial Day, just want to make sure everybody remembers it. Navy Officer Walter Backman is being interred at the Prairie River, or...
River Hills.
River Hills Cemetery. He was an Aurora resident who will be buried in Batavia 76 years after he died on the USS Oklahoma in Pearl Harbor. His remains were identified via DNA, so he is coming home. And he is being buried, there will be a short service at Healy Chapel in Aurora at 1:00 p.m. Then there will be a procession leaving Healy Chapel, west on Downer, north on Highland, and then to Sullivan, and finally north to Route 25. With the, VFW is going to be graciously using their parking lot if you want to park there, and with cooperation of other agencies, they're having shuttles run back and forth to the cemetery. I think it would be great if we could turn out and welcome home one of our own.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a real quick thing. On Sunday, June 10th, here at the afternoon, we're going to have quite a little celebration going on that day, because in the morning's the triathlon, but in the afternoon, we're going to have the Flag Day Ice Cream Social, which benefits the fireworks. And then the Bulldogs on Parade, or Unleashed, are going to be displayed, and so we think we're going to have a bunch of dance teams and the community band and some other music groups are playing. So there should be about a five, four, five-hour period of time on that afternoon when there'll be quite a bit of activity around the City Hall. And the Flag Day folks have asked if any of the aldermen or your spouses would be willing to come down and scoop some ice cream, because they're, they're thinking that they could end up with a much bigger crowd than what they ever thought they were going to get.
Do we get, do we get to quality control?
You get to what?
Do we get to quality control?
Yeah.
If you're lucky, you'll get put on the sprinkles detail.
Amen.
So if you please can, if you'd like to, we'd like to have some folks come down and help out, and just all you do is spend a half hour scooping some ice cream, I guess is what we're looking for you to do.
Whatever. It's in the evening this time.
Don't be in.
What, you're in? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll scoop some.
The, the other thing that's out there is, is that we are just shy of a little bit more than a month away from the Fourth of July fireworks program, which, as all of you know, is the biggest event that we host in town every year as far as people, someplace between 15,000 and 20,000 out there. It's the biggest traffic jam that we have to deal with at 10 o'clock at night. And we have gotten a lot of different people have shown up with donations this year again, so it looks like we're going to be successful in being able to publicly pay for the whole show with donations, as we have for the past, let's see, it was started in 1950, so this is the 68th year of this thing. And we've never had to go into the taxpayers' pocket to pay for the show. So that's a point of great community pride and something that I think we should strive to maintain. But I think of all the events that we do in the community, this really does pay tribute to the American history and the birthday of America, and certainly the tribute to all those who served in foreign soil in defense of our liberties. So I think it's really a nice sentiment that we splash across the sky on this night. It needs to say, there's a lot of people that, it's probably Party Night in Batavia. We never have another night where we have so many people entertaining family and friends and whatever. So it's a good thing, and I think we, we should be very proud of what we've put together and the tradition it was started, long ago before most of us were ever even born, quite honestly. In fact, I think almost everybody sitting here other than myself was probably not in, around in their life when they started this fireworks show. So, great traditions. So Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion.
I move adjourned.
Second. Moved by Brown, second by Salvati. Kirk take voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.